Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the July 19th, already the 19th meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. We have a full quorum and are called to order. We will start with a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone, and moving on to Commissioner announcements. Anybody have any? No, we're good. Good. All right. Moving on to public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda or anything that anybody wishes to comment on. Nope. Okay. Consent calendar. We have the current and advanced planning processing list and approval of minutes from April 19th. Anybody want to pull any item? Mike?
I just have a comment.
Sure.
I don't need to pull it, but under the minutes for April 19th, under D, under unfinished business, page 16. You know, my goal is to approve the minutes, but I just want to point something out here that under the motion, Vice Chairman Rochen moved to approve the Planning Commission, collect comments from other advisory boards within 30 days. The Planning Commission will then forward the report to City Council Commissioner and Graffy and myself, and the motion passed 5-0, so that was on April 19th. It's now July 19th. So I would like to approve the minutes, but we need to wrap this thing up because I've been getting calls from Public Benefits Committee.
I got my comments.
Okay.
I don't know who else is missing.
So I just want to point that out that we just need to wrap that up.
And I made them. It's still a good idea.
Yeah. Okay. I didn't want to, I just wanted to point out the business of the day and the fact that it's been 90, it's been 90 days, so now we need to.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Mike. That's it.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve? I guess we just need to approve the minutes.
Yeah, a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you want to call it?
Who else? Two seconds.
Bill. All right. Moving on to our public hearings, we have Nancy here to present that. A little technical. All right. So this is a Planning Commission hearing to approve a new six-room hotel, conditional use permit, coastal development permit, and parking exception. Project location and zoning. This is on three street frontages. It's on San Jacinto between Alder and Birch in North Morro Bay on a strip of land that's zoned R4 SP. The zoning overview, the R4 zoning allows multifamily hotel professional office. Residential density would be just over three units for this site. Hotel density would be eight units allowed, and they are proposing six. R4 allows a maximum height of 30 feet. They're proposing 22. North Main specific plan encourages 25 feet maximum height. It requires frontage improvements. It requires utilities to be undergrounded. It requires street trees and a review of the view corridors. This is a photo simulation of the proposed project from the corner of Alder and San Jacinto, and the inset is the same, more or less the same view on a vacant site. The project is a two-story, six-room self-service hotel with a total of 4,117 square feet of interior space. The project includes a staff laundry area, covered and uncovered parking, motorcycle parking, and a bike rack. This is the lower level floor plan. This shows you the two hotel rooms, the staff area which is shaded in a little bit, access stairway to the second level, and the covered and uncovered car parking. The second floor plan is four hotel rooms and an access stairway. And just a note, there is an accessible suite on the second floor, and there is a fully accessible suite on the lower floor. The lower floor is accessible by a mobility impaired person, and the other is accessible by someone needing accessibility features but who does not have full mobility limitations. Development standards. This shows you the zoning and the specific plan standards in the center and the proposed project standards on the right. The red indicates that they have achieved six vehicle spaces, but it requires a parking exception because one of them is in a setback. But they have met all of the other standards. The North Main specific plan review of view impact. The larger photo is a view from Dogwood and San Jacinto looking west towards the ocean. You can see a little bit of blue water out in the distance. And because the elevation changes, lower where the site is, higher as you move east on San Jacinto, the impact of this building is what's shown in the inset photo. The blue square indicates the approximate amount of the building that would be visible over that single-story home. San Jacinto, incidentally, is not a protected view corridor in the local coastal plan, although as you move up the hill to the east, it does provide views. Project parking. They have four standard covered parking spaces. One uncovered space, which is allowed by approval of the parking exception. One van accessible space, two motorcycle parking spaces, a bike rack, and there's street parking available on Alder and Birch, not on San Jacinto because of the bike lane. Parking exception. The six parking spaces located in the setback on the Alder side of the building, so you can see that on the left. And it lines up and it functions just like all of the other spaces. It also lines up with the hardscaped area to the north, which I think makes it look like it belongs there, and there's room on the side between the parking space and Alder for landscape area. There's building elevations from top to left, top-left to top-right view from Birch, the north side, which is adjacent to an existing two-story home, and view from Alder, and view from San Jacinto. And that's the end of the presentation. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit, coastal development permit, and parking exception for the six-room hotel by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 07-22, which includes findings and conditions of approval. Thank you. And we don't have the developer, the owner, the architect here?
Yes. The owner should be participating via webinar.
Okay. Excellent. Any questions from Commissioners for staff? No? All right. Let's open for public comment, and we will start with whoever is representing this.
It should be Sanjay.
Sanjay?
Tell LGP who it is.
Sanjay? Yana?
LGP, do we have?
Yeah, we've got him right here. I'll give him permission to talk.
Thank you.
And yeah, there we go. They should be unmuted.
Hello.
Thank you. Welcome. You're live.
Hello. Okay, great. Thank you so much. So I'm Garav Kanna. I'm speaking on behalf of Sanjay and affiliated. You can refer to me as Bobby. I commonly go by Bobby. So that's fine. I want to say, first of all, thank you so much to the Planning Commission, Nancy. You know, it's been a very long process to get here, and I apologize that I wasn't able to be there in person, you know, attending some business at another site daily. But, you know, still, we are very much involved in the project, in the process. So yeah, apologies for that. I just wanted to say a few things and then happy to defer to any questions. You know, mainly, we saw, you know, this wonderful site. We wanted to present, you know, this, we think, you know, great project. You know, I represent a small partnership. We've managed every kind of real estate for a long time, many, many years, and so, you know, we have every intention to very professionally manage the project. We have a lot of environmental features that, you know, we will be sort of proposing in the building plan. We are sort of setting out two plans, including, you know, solar panels, battery, and, you know, focus on energy savings. So that's one thing that's, you know, very important. We visited Morro Bay, you know, a number of us in the partnership. We visited Morro Bay over a period of several months and had a difficult time getting a hotel room, actually. And so, you know, that was one of the motivations for sort of proposing this. We really liked the site and, you know, working with architects and various consultants, we think we have put together, you know, just a fantastic proposal for this project. And I do want to speak in regards to the self-service nature. We really see an opportunity to, you know, professionally manage the building at a distance using, you know, surveillance technology throughout and various like occupancy, environmental, and sort of other sensors and technology for things like door access and, you know, maybe sort of a smartphone app, if you will, and things like that. That's things that we do have experience with. And, you know, we plan to fully utilize that throughout the building. So that would include things like, you know, just standard cameras and sort of a security surveillance, but as well, you know, environmental sensors for things like noise, you know, light sensors for, you know, potential nuisances at night, you know, noise, things like that. And then, of course, any other sort of environmental sensors in terms of like air quality and, you know, anything else that we can sort of detect with privacy in mind, but also, you know, preventing any potential nuisances. So overall, we plan to actively monitor the site nearly 24/7 using a variety of technologies and, you know, basically have maintenance crews come, service staff come, you know, just periodically as they are needed. They would come, do their work, and then leave. So, you know, they won't need to basically be there, you know, we would work with them. And yeah, you know, I hope that the project is approved and, you know, I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, Bobby. If you could hang on, we'll get to other public comment, and then we may have some questions for you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Winholz, do you have some comments? Thank you.
I do. Betty Winholz. This is not the first item that's come before you that is a self-service hotel, and I think it's worth a discussion to understand how that is different or the same as a unhosed vacation rental. I think when there are not people on the premises, I don't get how that's a hotel. And so if we're creating a new category here, I think let's be upfront about that and identify it as such. And it's not really a hotel. It's an unhosed something, you know. And I'm not, having been presented with what's in the rooms, I don't know if there's kitchenettes in there, so they're really are like, more like a vacation rental where you can be self-sustaining, or is it just a room like a hotel? So that I hope you would talk about. So clarifying that definition of what a self-service hotel is. I don't understand his definition of people who are mobile, limited on the first floor as opposed to the second floor. I'm trying to imagine who those people would be, that they could get to the second floor, but they're still limited, so maybe that could be expanded upon, if you don't mind. I think I heard you say that the driveway into the parking was from Alder. Is that across the street from the bar? So is that going to create some traffic issue there that isn't currently there? Because right now, that's an empty lot. There is no traffic issue, but we know that San Jacinto entering Highway 1 with the frontage of Main is an issue. And so this is right adjacent to that area. And then does that also guarantee that the city's given up on putting around about there? What else did I want to say about that? There wasn't a view from as you come off of Highway 1 onto San Jacinto, what that looks like. Currently, it's all one-story, so you're coming in and now here's this block of two-story. So it'd be nice to see what that would look like because it's really not a view from Alder. It's not a view from San Jacinto. It's like you're coming off and then wham, there's this wall there. And then the mention of solar, is that above the 22 feet? Is that within the 30 feet? In the rendition, you cannot tell that there's solar on this building. Is that because it's hidden and the walls are tall enough to hide the solar inside, or is it just not on your rendition over there? I hope that's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Betty. Do we have anybody else for public comment? Anthony?
Thank you, Chair Stewart. Currently, I do not see any hands raised in the queue.
Okay. Thank you. We'll close public comment. And let's go back to Bobby. Maybe he can answer some of these questions. I agree that we're in this new area with these unhosed hotels. I feel like it's probably a kind of wave of the future thing with the challenges of staffing, but it is, you're right. I think, Ms. Winholz, it's important that we define it and be careful with it. I do know in the plans, there are not kitchens. I think they will have, usually there's a little refrigerator, a little microwave, and often a coffee maker. And that's what I saw in the plans. Yeah, and that was in the, I think Nancy's comments, back to certain public comment that came in earlier, but there are some plans in here. I did, it looked to me like the traffic, it went in on Alder and out on Birch, so it's a one-way into and, you know, out of that lot. I was also, and this is where perhaps Bobby, you could comment, I was really interested in this idea of accessibility units aside from mobility challenged, and I think it's a fascinating idea, and I think there could be some really interesting and exciting things that could be done for other kinds of ability-challenged folks. But I was wondering what specifically the features are in that accessibility room upstairs? So Bobby?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, and just to touch on your previous point, you know, there isn't any sort of full kitchen. It's just as you said, I mean, that's, you know, that's what we plan and propose is just a small kitchen, like a hotel room, the standard fridge and coffee maker and maybe a small microwave. That's it. In regards to the accessibility, we, you know, discussed with the city sort of about this in great length and, you know, came to this sort of consensus that we think works really well. I mean, we looked at, you know, the sort of worked with a certified accessibility specialist and, you know, discussed about sort of possible options and what the code requires and what is, you know, considered reasonable. And, you know, there are other accessibility-related impairments, things like hearing or, you know, sight, or, you know, there's sort of other impairments besides mobility. And, you know, so definitely, you know, it's sort of required and part of the system that there be sort of visual alarms instead of just, you know, hearing alarms. So there's sort of, you know, blinking lights. For instance, if the doorbell is rung, there has to be a blinking light, not just, you know, a sound. So, you know, things like that are, you know, things that we've kind of taken into consideration and sort of put into effect in regards to that room. And, you know, we're certainly going to work on that in more detail, but that's the general idea.
It's a really interesting idea, and I did wonder about things like that with visually impaired or hearing impaired, and it makes a lot of sense. And how about the solar panels? Are they on the roof or?
Yeah. Yeah, they're on the roof. You know, we will, you know, I mean, obviously, there's great sun and lowering the carbon footprint, we will, you know, pretty much put as large of a solar array as we can to, you know, just try and reduce our impact on the environment and sort of reliance on the grid.
Will it be below the roof line, or will it rise above? It will be below. Okay.
Yeah. So yeah, you know, it shouldn't be visible, maybe just, you know, at certain angles, you'll see the tips or something. We'll certainly angle them, and that all gets done and calculated by what is the most efficient angle to, you know, sort of point them at in regards to maximum sunlight exposure. But we do have a parapet around the entire roof, and I believe it's two feet. I don't have the plans in front of me, so I apologize if I'm wrong, but I, you know, there is a parapet, so most of that should be covered and obscured.
Great. Another question I had, are you doing any electric chargers for parking? It may have said.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we're definitely going to, you know, put that. That's not on the plan, but that's absolutely part of the overall plan. The exact details, well, you know, we'll definitely work through more, but absolutely.
Okay. Great. That was my questions for now. Mike? Yana?
Yeah, and you got my question, Susan. My question to the applicant was how could or would you accommodate an electric vehicle on-site? So you got me. So all I'm saying is it didn't come up during the presentation, so obviously, electric vehicles are going to become more popular, not less popular, especially in a hotel environment. So that should be something that is addressed in any multi-unit, I would think, hotel environment. So I just want to make sure that, he said it will be worked out?
It'll be.
Well, let's make sure it's worked out in the plans, in the final plans.
Is that, Scott, is that a planning requirement? Is there a certain number of rooms and you're required to put in a electric vehicle charging station or?
They're required to put the infrastructure in, so if you would like, you can add a condition that they have one put in.
Sounds like he's planning on it, but we could do that as a condition.
Okay.
Happy with that. Anything else, Mike?
No.
Mr. Rochen.
So I got a couple of questions.
Can I say something before you?
Oh, yeah, sure.
The plan, you know, the layout, the floor plans were not, they're on mine, on my, on the project plan I have here, but they weren't on Susan's and they weren't on Bill's. So nobody had the full floor plans. Well, we found them. Okay. But Bill didn't have them, so.
Oh, okay.
So somebody, some people had them, some didn't. I just want to make a point of that.
I had a blank page. I don't know why. It didn't load the floor plan. But there's also not a section in the building, right? Through the building? So it, wouldn't that be required, that you'd have a building section?
I don't think it is required. Elevations are required. Floor plans are required. Site plan is required. Sections typically are with the building permit plan set.
Interesting.
We sometimes get them, yes.
I think you often get them. What does it take to, maybe what this commission could do is make a little more clear idea of what you need to show and submit, so like we could at least ask for that. I think having a section, Bobby's explanation is helpful, but not good enough. You have to know the actual height of the parapet. You don't want the, you know, the photovoltaics sticking up above the parapet. Also, he's not showing any mechanical equipment on the roof. I don't know. Maybe there isn't any? I don't know. Air conditioning, probably not. I don't know. Maybe Bobby could come back with that. My concern is I just want to make sure that when we put this stuff on the roof, we know that it's going to be, you know, hidden, and we know it's considered.
Yeah. You know, I can just answer, I mean, on those points, that's, you know, we would obviously detail that more in the building plan, but that's definitely a consideration that we do have, which is why we, you know, proposed the parapet to make sure that all of that stuff will be obscured and sort of the mechanicals they have, you know, if the sort of standard equipment is too tall, there's lots of, you know, lots of options nowadays for maybe slimmer units and things like that. There's, you know, a lot of different options, so we definitely plan to sort of keep that all hidden and obscured from the.
That sounds good. I think what I would want to do, and this could be handled administratively, is see a section parapet height because you've got to account for the slope of the roof as well.
The height of the parapet's 18 inches.
Yes. That's not, by the time you drain it, that's not much.
Based on the plan.
Yeah. I mean, by the time you slope the roof. So I think, I guess, one of the, if we decide to approve, I think one of the conditions I'd like to see is a roof plan for staff review that shows the, and specifies the panels that they're going to use. We want to make sure, I think that's an important thing, that you can't see it visually. I'm also curious, the architects, the designers aren't here? Is that unusual?
Yeah, it's not normally the case.
Yeah. And we don't, we don't ask for designers? That's not a requirement?
No.
The other thing I, that always is helpful on the plans, in the landscape plan, is to have container sizes? We don't require that? Nancy?
It's not on our submittal checklist now. I don't know whether it includes it, but that's not a submittal requirement.
I don't think they have that. They have a list of plants?
Yeah, they got the list, but in the quantity, but not the size of the container. And that's maybe some discussion the commission could have.
I think the North Main specific plan has a requirement for the street trees to be more mature, but I don't think it specifies the size of the other plants that are on the site.
Right. And I think that's important to us, especially, you know, when we're approving a couple of things here, that it would be really good to know what the container sizes are. And then how do we, in terms of enforcement of that kind of stuff, is that building and safety that would do that? Like just to make sure that they're using the container sizes?
No. Planning goes out on all finals and reviews for plant material type location, those types of things.
I mean, isn't that a good idea?
Certainly something we could add, the requirement there. I mean, you're right, though. Normally, that's on the, we have them on the plans. It's not something that's.
Normally, the landscape architect will put it on there. I don't see a landscape architect's name, but yeah.
Yeah.
And if the designer was here, these are questions we could easily answer. So going back to the parapet, I think that's a big deal. 18 inches is probably not going to be enough to hide, you know, all the rooftop mechanical, I wouldn't think, with the slopes. So I think that would be an important thing to look at. Because this is an unhosed hotel, there's no signage. Is that right? I didn't see any signage plans.
They don't currently, they don't have any proposed on the plan that I saw.
So if they wanted to come back in later and put signage?
They would, well, yes, if they don't include it in their plan, then they have to come back later with a signage permit request.
And, but that wouldn't come before the Planning Commission, right?
No.
Generally, no.
No.
So if we were looking at how to help submittals and make sure we had a more complete and full submittal, that would be another thing we could include, right? That if signage is going to be proposed for the project, I think we need to see it as part of the proposal, or I would like to see it. Does that make sense, Scott? or I would like to see it. Does that make sense, Scott?
It certainly, normally, we would get, you know, signage proposals for larger projects. This is fairly small. If the commission's interested in that, certainly, we can take that into consideration.
Well, it is a hotel. And, you know, I mean, hotels sometimes have pretty big signs. I don't know what.
Well, we have limitations.
We're limited.
We have limitations, you know, in our, in our codes that limit the size of the signs. So that's why I say it's kind of a small building, it's not going to have very big signage. But again, it's a concern of the commission, and I'm happy to talk about it.
For, for me, having gone through our sign permitting issues for decades, no, maybe not that long.
Seems like it.
But it's been a number of years that, that we really did review it, look, look at the process, make requirements. I feel pretty comfortable, especially like this on a small project, one business, so not like an Embarcadero, you know, multiple units in the same big, then you've got to look at it. This one, I think, our, our requirements, I would trust staff to say whether the sign's too large, too garish, the colors are wrong, you know, those kinds of things fall under the, the sign ordinance that we have.
I guess I'm going to hold to my guns on this one.
That's fine.
That, you know, the signage impacts community issues quite often. I mean, this has got residential near it. There could be comments on it. Sometimes it gets bigger, you know. And the fact that it is a hotel, it's kind of curious, because this is an in-between. So I guess my final thing is trying to understand what an unhosted hotel is. Do you guys know how common this is in other cities?
I don't, I don't know how common it is. I have seen other products like this out there. And, and sometimes, you know, it was, I've seen them in different settings. So I've seen them several years ago, probably now, going back five or six years, where it was not in our city, but where they had a, it was a triplex. I, I saw it was turned into kind of like a VRBO type thing. It was kind of like, kind of like this. I've seen ones that were purposely non-hosted, and that's kind of what they referred to them. Might have been another different, slightly different verbiage, but they looked just like this. And that was also on a platform like VRBO, you know, Airbnb, that type of thing. And even our existing hotels, you know, are on those platforms. So it's, there's a, there's a, I think, a merging of the, our graying of the, of what used to be pretty clear lines is now, and.
Yeah. And I'm seeing it nationally, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess, to Betty's point, do we differentiate? Should we start considering that? Have other, have other cities distinguished the type?
I, I don't know. You know, I've seen, I think even, I think City of San Luis even has one of these in one of their mixed-use buildings. They have commercial on the ground floor, they have some residential above, and they have a, I think it's a non-hosted hotel thing, it's in the middle of one of them. So we have some of them that are actually local that did this. I don't know if they, if they have any particular ordinance that, you know, does it, or it was just, you know, it was just addressed through the permitting process, which is probably what's happening.
And I'm, I'm not trying to make a case. I don't know. I can't, I can't even think why it would be different necessarily. And we didn't close public comment. So Betty, if, if you had any idea why, what, what makes this different than a hotel?
Well, well, for me, if it was a vacation rental, they'd have to have a sign in the window, and if they make extra noise, because it is in a residential area, I mean, Alder, Birch, that whole area, who do they call? Because no one's there to say, oh. And so do they call the police? And the police say, no, it's not our responsibility. We have a person that's a code enforcer that's supposed to take care of that. And so that's my concern.
So your point would be if, if a neighbor wants to contact the owners, how do they do that?
I think the owners have already answered that question, which was a public comment and is on Exhibit C to your staff report. They said that they would have a number posted so that people can call if there's noise, if there's parking problems, if there's some issue with the hotel. And I, I think the primary difference between this and an Airbnb is this is run by professionals who have experience in running hotels.
Rather than a homeowner, yeah.
Right.
And the, the issue related to noise, you can always call the police and they'll always come out. They're not going to tell you no.
Asia?
Yeah. Actually, my question was about noise, because this will neighbor a residential home. I'm guessing, I read about the CEQA exception, or just its status under noise? Like, I'm guessing that it met the qualifications for whatever's required with that?
It meets the criteria for an exemption.
For an exemption. And that, so, in the design, noise, and I was thinking, lights around the building are considered, since it's kind of a mixed residential area. So I guess I just wanted to ask the applicant that.
Are you asking about external lights?
Yeah, like external lighting and noise, the way that the building was designed, that was all taken into consideration? Or how was that taken into consideration?
Yeah, I can, I can answer on that. I mean, you know, we, primarily, the noise, like, you know, we'll have sensors throughout that will monitor noise levels. So we would get an alert, basically, if there was, you know, any kind of loud nuisances going on. And we would be able, you know, we would address that right away. We don't have any particular, you know, plan about sort of the streetlights. You know, if, if the streetlights are on, then, you know, obviously, there's going to be a light in terms of our exterior lighting. You know, there, there will be probably some exterior lighting just to light, you know, light the pathways and things like that. You know, and it'll, it'll all be done based on what is required or what is acceptable. If there's an ordinance or requirement to sort of turn those off at a period of time, then we respect that. Some cities have sort of like light-saving ordinances, but generally, nothing, you know, nothing obtrusive. And, and same with the sign. I mean, we don't have any plans for an obtrusive sign. If there is going to be something, it's going to be pretty small.
Yeah, I guess.
Right now.
I guess I was just wondering if with the design of the actual building, if things like the edge of the building that will, that will be adjacent to a residential building, how that design was thought through. And I've, you know, lived across the street from places with lights going on and off all night, or a building that maybe wasn't soundproofed well. And so I just wanted to hear their comments on that to kind of reassure residences around the building.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely plan to use some good, you know, insulation and sort of good, good windows for energy, but as well for, you know, noise. And so that's definitely some of the things that, you know, we've taken into consideration. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll certainly be addressing those points. You know, and we understand at the same time, you know, there's common walls. And so that's also something that we want to address.
Thanks. Joe?
Well, I'll defer, you know, my, my comments, but I do have a couple of questions for Bobby. And they're pretty simple. With respect to the ADA, the two units, I'm assuming, but I'm not sure I'm assuming correctly, that in terms of the facilities of these units, one on the first floor, one on the second floor, they will be identical in terms of how they facilitate things, except that one will be on the ground floor. So the one on the second floor is for a less movement in person. Is that correct? Or are there differences in what these two units will offer?
Primarily, they're the exact same. I believe the code requires one shower and one tub, sort of a, like a mobility-impaired tub. But, but otherwise, they're, you know, pretty much the same.
So I, I'm just curious also. So what would be the logic of having one on the second floor as, as opposed to two on the ground floor, which would be available to a wider range of impaired people?
I think that relates to the distribution of accessible spaces in a building that has two floors. So one is actually not required on the second floor, but there is one provided on the second floor. And it could be also a mobility-impaired person that is using crutches or has help or is a child and can be carried. So I think they wanted, the, the room on the bottom floor met the criteria for accessible spaces, but they wanted to provide another opportunity for a different type of, of space for someone that needed.
So Nancy, code only requires one unit?
Yeah. In this case, this is based on the size of the unit, the views from the rooms, the access, the, there's no common spaces. So, I mean, they look at the whole project, and they make a determination based on position of the room, view, and, and everything, determine what meets the criteria.
So, so one is required for ADA?
For this.
For this project, correct.
So, so the applicant is actually being a little bit more generous than?
I think it was, yes. I mean, it was suggested that, you know, the second room could also be provided. And I think it's a good idea.
Sure. With respect to the landscaping, I, you know, so often landscaping is used to enhance the appearance of a building. But I have a very difficult time figuring out what's the maturity timeframe for the vegetation. So Bobby, do you, you know, I see a kind of a lovely depiction of your, of your design. Do you have any idea in terms of the number of years that it might take to create that kind of a landscape environment?
I mean, generally, you know, it, it will be somewhat close. Obviously, you know, tree, like, you know, some of the trees are not going to be fully mature. But I would figure, you know, in a reasonable amount of time, maybe a couple of years, two, three years, something like that. You know, we're certainly not going to put in plants, you know, like small plants where, you know, really, it's a, it's a tree. We'll bring in the tree. Yeah.
Okay. And then I also note in the file that, again, with respect to difficulties or problems with the, with the patrons at the property, that local resources would be dispatched pursuant to complaints. What, what does that mean exactly? What are the local resources? And, and how might they be utilized if a difficulty arose?
Yeah, I mean, you know, generally, I, so I, that is probably like a rare event because, you know, in, I mean, in the case of sort of nuisance of a patron, we would also have, you know, the ability to communicate with them. So I think the, you know, the first order of, you know, sort of anybody, you know, managing a hotel would be to communicate directly with the patrons and try to, you know, sort of remedy the situation there. If it actually escalated to a point, we'd certainly have, you know, consultant, like, you know, sort of maintenance staff and, and sort of consultants that we would work with, local resources. And if, you know, if, if, if required, perhaps the police. But, you know, I, I would imagine that's pretty rare.
I mean, I mean, should I assume, is there, you have a human being at the, you know, end of a phone monitoring this 24 hours and capable of sending an employee to the premises? Is, is that what you, getting that when you say local resources?
Yes, yes. You know, I mean, I personally would not be monitoring 24/7, but we would have somebody, you know, whether local or remote, monitoring.
And someone, an employee that could actually appear on the property, or would he, would that not be the case?
Yes, yes. There would be an employee that could appear on the property.
Okay. Thank you, Bobby. That's all I had.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Wow. Let's, let's do, see if there's any discussion we want to have among ourselves first. So public comment is officially, officially closed. I think it was closed, and, but we brought Bobby back.
I just had one more question. Just about to ask that question before you, because it's come up at least three times regarding the landscaping. So on the report, it stated that there would be about 1,500 square foot of landscaping, but we did not receive a detailed landscape plan. Is that correct?
There's a plan in there.
We have a plan. We don't have plant.
Okay, plants.
Container size.
That, okay. So.
It's got a plant list.
But, okay, okay. Because when I was looking at the pictures, it kind of, I was, wasn't sure what, yeah, I see it now. But, you know, I just want to make sure we have the specific detail as what that landscaping is going to look like upon maturity. That goes back to Joe, and then Bill has said, and, you know, I just want to make sure it's more specific.
Goes back to droughts.
Oh, yeah. California natives.
One, one last quick question on that landscaping thing. It looks like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight circles that look like larger trees. Would those be considered the city trees? And then the rest would be?
It depends on whether they're in the right of way, or if they're on the property.
Gotcha.
And either one could be a street tree.
You're in the right of way.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's, to me, it looks like a good plan for a lot of planting.
Yes.
And I hope we can get them some water to get them going in the first year or two. Okay. So, close questions, comments. Asia?
Mine is more of a discussion comment question. So what we are looking at is a conditional use permit, a coastal development permit, and a parking exception, all because we need that extra parking space that's technically in the setback.
The parking exception is what is needed for that extra parking space. The use requires the conditional use permit and the coastal development permit.
Okay. Because I guess I was under the impression that the specific plan for that area allows for.
Everything needs a conditional use permit, a coastal development permit.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Any other discussion?
Bev's ready. Are you ready for an outline of a motion?
Do you have a comment, Joe? Sure. Discussion, question, conversation?
Well, it's.
Yeah.
It's, it's comments. You know, I would, I would, I would like to think that any, any plan that came before this commission would be as detailed as possible or as, as reasonably required. And especially when this kind of a proposal, four more bales are fairly unique and uncommon kind of development. So, you know, the prospect of, of the signage and the prospect of whether in fact the solar panels could be visible from street level are really important. And I, and I, I have no doubt in the sincerity of the applicant. But, you know, as a responsible commission member, I would like to see the assurances on a plan. With respect to the landscaping, I've been thinking in general of my experience over the last few years as commissioner. And again, it's so difficult to, to decide the adequacy of a, of a landscaping plan, or even more importantly, the sustainability of a landscaping plan and what it's going to look like a few years hence, and, and whether the applicants are really conscientious in maintaining it. And I'm wondering if perhaps we might not incorporate something like a, you know, a four-year look at it again provision so we can, you know, determine whether it kind of lived up to our expectations. Particularly, and again, with some reservation, I make this comment, but the design of this project, you know, seems to me to sort of break up the architectural facades largely using color and texture. You know, I, for one, like to see more of a sort of a three-dimensional breakup of architectural styles. But I, I'm not going to be insistent in terms of that, insist on my views. But again, and I'm not a big fan of open carports. So the adequacy of the landscaping becomes even more important to me. And also, I, you know, I can, I can recall that in past, we gave some attention to the architectural facades of the, you know, the, the site that might not be front-facing to the business street. The, the north-looking facade between it and the house strikes me as very monolithic and, and, you know, probably not all that attractive. I don't know what to do about the adequacy of local resources in the event of trouble. I guess that's. in the event of trouble. I guess that's probably something that we hone based on experience with these kinds of projects. So I'll, I'll leave that one alone. And then the final thing is, you know, recalling our last meeting about the, the sustainability of water in Moro Bay. Now, I realize this is a small project and it's not going to impact in any significant way, but it just underscores the need that we really have to have a long-term water sustainability plan. And when the gentleman spoke to us at the last meeting, my understanding that they were going to undertake that plan. But at this point, there was still a considerable ambiguity as to what extent the reclamation plant and its reclaimed water might satisfy that. And given the seemingly worsening drought situation in California, I am really concerned about that. Again, this is, I'm just taking this as a time to stand on my soapbox because I realize this project isn't going to affect it. But as a body, we really have to give some thought to this because, again, we're going to be living with these structures for 50 or 60 or 80 years, and we're talking right now about a two-year analysis as to the adequacy of Moro Bay's water.
Susan, could I add on to what?
Sure.
What Joe's talking about. So Joe, that was my concern when I went through this, that, you know, to your point, you've got a CUP in your residential area. Signage might be well and good somewhere, but here, it's about how big, it's about the off light, where it lights, how it's adjacent to the neighbor. There's no material list in the submittal. So we don't know kind of what the materials are, what the details are. There's very little articulation in the architecture. In other words, there could easily be some overhangs that would shade the windows, which would add depth, three dimension to it. It's, I love the contemporary quality of the design, but it's really underdone as I think the submittal is. I think it meets requirements, but I don't think it gives me the information to make a good decision. The other problem here for a CUP adjacent to a residential, as you mentioned, Joe, is the, the parking. And not is, is it a visual thing which can be helped in the daytime with landscape, but at night it lights up. And so you almost have to have a lighting plan to have an idea how bright that, because it's facing a street adjacent to a residential neighborhood. So for me, and maybe this is an outline that we talk about as a body, but I think we always need some, and most projects give us this. I think this project is underdone in its submittal. We don't have a material list. We don't have definition or any kind of detail. We don't have a building section, which means we don't really know how the parapets work. I think signage is necessary. I think it's about, about beauty scale as well as light. No container sizes, so we really don't know what the thing is. And lighting, I think it's, it's an issue. The final thing I'd actually offer, that when you're in a residential neighborhood like this, I find it super helpful that the elevations have context so that you would be required to show in your elevation the next door neighbor. And that's about height of buildings. It's also about scale. And when we're doing a CUP, these are all things that really help us make informed decisions. If it goes to an administrative review, the signage, they have much less influence than we do. As we're looking at a whole project, we can really, you know, customize what's there. So I guess, I was just going to make a motion, but I think with a list of efforts, I'd actually like to see the project come back.
So can I ask staff, in terms of lighting, we do have city codes about that, correct? And, and night sky things and lighting would need to be shaded and directed low?
Directed down and not spill off the property lines, all those things.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not as concerned about that because there are codes they have to follow.
Yep, but Susan, honestly?
I do agree that the landscaping softens the look of a fairly stark building and that tree size, you know, trees take time to grow. And it's actually hard to transplant very mature trees. I think there's a good effort to, to get, you know, teenage trees. But, but in my experience in working with projects where they've tried to transplant fairly mature trees, it's rarely successful. So success for healthy trees would be important. I agree that, I think that this applicant has come in with a project that's already below the maximum height that they could have done, and not asking for a height exception. Now, if they needed to go up another six inches to make sure that solar panels were, were shielded on a flat roof, perhaps that's something that, that could be done.
Our zoning code has a provision for mechanical screening.
Okay.
And silver, solar plans are generally done at building permit stage.
Okay.
I think sometimes as a deferred submittal. So we ask them to show them, but on a flat roof with an 18-inch parapet, maybe they did, maybe they didn't. But the slant of the panel is probably not going to be so extreme that it would cause a height issue.
Right, right. I would also say that we have approved several projects on the waterfront for non-hosted hotels. This is not new to this town. I do think it is something we are going to be seeing, especially for smaller units where it's just not affordable to hire somebody to sit at a desk. And to create the space for that desk is probably not the best use of the site itself. You know, it's just more space that can't be monetized. I think it's the, what was interesting to me was Bobby's discussion of the kinds of technology that can be used to monitor this. And I think in some ways is probably more responsive than a larger hotel with an onsite manager, perhaps, who's, you know, at a desk somewhere. So I, I think this is a new area. Again, not entirely new to Moro Bay, but, but it's something we will be looking at in the future as things change, you know. I think large has, has not, large projects are going out. You know, we're getting a new one coming in on 41, but I think that's unusual and especially for Moro Bay. The smaller, yeah, infill projects. And this is an area that is zoned for this. Yes, there are neighbors in the area, but there's also, what was a bar is now a coffee shop, I think, and there's a liquor store and, you know, kind of a throughway off the highway going up to, into the neighborhood. I also think a developer and an owner doesn't want to become known for having an ugly project with dead trees or, you know, ugly landscaping or garish signage. I think we have to, at some point, you know, as a business person, you are presenting your face to the community. And, you know, if, if you have poor taste and, and poor habits and poor maintenance, you're not going to be in business very long. And that's just the fact of business. So I, I would be willing to propose a motion to grant the parking exception, to make sure that staff has a roof plan to look at and be sure that we are not getting, you know, visual disturbance above that parapet level. I would like to require a charging station. And I just think, again, that's smart business for, for what we're doing. And, and I would like to, and I, and it sounded like they were more than willing, but to have a requirement for the street trees to be as mature as, as possible for, and probably for all the landscaping to be as mature as possible. So, and I don't know if I missed.
There is a condition in the resolution about signage because.
Yeah, I saw that.
Normally, a business that is going to be dependent on signage is going to propose signage when they get their CUP, CDP. But something like this, I would think, you're not going to walk by and then decide to stay there because it's not that kind of.
No, this is a plan ahead.
But this is probably going to have something discreet and small. You could, it's currently in the resolution to submit later for community development director approval.
Well, I guess to respond to Susan's comments, it's, it's not unusual. We disagree, Susan and I. And I do think our job is to make sure for the community that this stuff happens. And mature, like, you know, without sizes on the landscape, you just don't know. And there has to be a commitment to water it. All that should be in the plan. The architecture is not strong here, and it could be better, should be better. We haven't really even talked about it because I, you know, I think I was hoping to get a materials list. The issue on the lighting, what the lighting stuff will tell you is off light throws. But see that white wall at the back? That's going to be bright white when, when the lights are on and at night for security. I think the extra level of review that a body like this gives as an architect, we can make that evaluation. Sometimes something as simple as painting that back wall a color can, can stop it from being kind of garish on the street. The simplicity of the project, I think, needs thought and care. I don't see it submitted here. I would not be ready to approve something, as much as I think Bobby's a great guy, I like the project. I think our job is not to just have good wishes. I think we have to get certainty. So that's why, again, I would come up with a list and an advisory thing of what we think it would take to get it done. And I guess my motion would be to, to actually ask it to return.
I, I think for the, for the most part, I, I think I, I agree with that last expressed opinion. You know, this, I don't think this body sits here simply to ensure that the, the relevant city ordinances are, are observed. I think very often there are nuances in which we decide more is needed or a variation. I realize we can't create something out of whole cloth, but sometimes we scope what the ordinance says. And, and I think this, I think the city looks to us for, you know, assurances. Assurances as to the sign will be adequate and the lighting will be adequate and the solar panels will be adequately disguised and that the architecture is sufficiently detailed, if you will. And, and I'm, you know, I'm sensitive to economic cost. I really am. But it strikes me that, you know, the cost of, of additional planning is, you know, not all that significant in the scheme of the overall cost of the project. So I.
So Joe, do you remember times in the past when, when we have looked at projects and we've actually discussed, say, paint colors and suggested, you know, because I feel like we've done that. And, I mean, I wonder if there are things we could do at this juncture that might help, you know, in terms of, you know, instead of the stark white that we see on these pictures, which may or may not be what they plan for, to, to be sure that.
Well, let me, let me respond. As, as a person who has no architectural training, just, just an interest, I would resist even myself making explicit suggestions as to where to project the terrace or where to add more molding or where to, I, I would, you know, allow the, the applicant's experts to come back with their input. And, and I might even be persuaded that, you know, in this situation, you know, very little is necessary. But I, again, I'm just left with the sense that it could benefit from a little bit more additional thought to it. That's my thing.
Nancy, can I ask you a favor? Can you put up page 23 of the report I got? Because I've, page 23 of the report I got?
What report did you get?
Well, the staff, you know, the report that the planning commission gets, page 23, because.
Twenty-three of the packet?
Yeah, the packet.
As opposed to the actual report?
Yeah. Because a, a lot of times when you're doing your report, I have to go back and forth and back. But, you know, so we've got to figure that one out. Well, we'll figure it out, but I'm trying to get the picture I want to look at because it's going to.
So this photo simulation?
Yeah, it's going to talk to Bill, it's going to talk to Joe, it's going to talk to me and what we're looking for. It's going to kind of like hit it right on the head because right now.
This photo simulation.
Right there, right there. Now, just.
Meets the requirement. It shows the two-story house next to it.
Yeah, yeah. I just wish you had had that one. Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say is, but, does it give us a detail on all of the things that were just brought up as far as lighting, color, architecture, even water, water usage for all that landscaping, 600, 600 square foot of landscaping? Does it provide the things that were just discussed by, I don't want, I don't want to repeat what Bill and Joe just said, but all I'm saying is, we're not done yet. I think we could do better in coming up with a detail.
I think some of the things that you're asking for are generally done at building permits. So building permit, they submit the detail of the water plan and the water usage and how the plants are going to be watered. And they fill out a form that is required to show that they're using drought-resistant, water-effective methods. That's not generally done at the planning stage. The planning stage is just getting to them, to the point where we say, okay, your use is approved. Now you can design the details. I think the same with the, the other building at the end of the block. We spent some time before it was finalized, having them readjust their subterranean parking lot lights so that there was no glare because one of the neighbors, when they were testing the lights, said it was too much glare. So we went out, and this is when they're getting close to final building permit, and had them make changes to the lighting system, the lighting controls to meet the need. So there, there's certain things that happen at building permit stage. The solar, the Welo requirement for the landscape, the lighting, the architecture is.
Yeah.
Shown here.
Yeah. But the biggest thing I think I would, the biggest takeaway for me on this one would be the roof requirements. You've got an 18-inch parapet.
So we also have.
But what I'm saying is, they, they talked about solar panels, putting them in there. Are we going to be able to do it with the existing roof plan we have for 18-inch parapet? All I'm saying is.
But we have provisions in our code that requires screening for rooftop mechanical.
So I guess what I would say to Nancy's point, and I'll be as clear as I can, rooftop screens are not a good idea with this building. What it's trying to do is be simple and elegant. If all of a sudden you get screens popping up behind it and if the screens are not described. So the problem I have with depending just on, on codes, when you're looking at a CUP, a particular, you know, a conditional use permit, a specifically sensitive location, is that what the planning commission can do is take it to that next step. We can say, yes, the codes are good, and yes, we're not asking you to go beyond the codes, but we really want to know how it's going to work here. And because we get to say yes or no, that gives us the leverage to do that. It's not just a code issue.
So I think the screening she was, Nancy was referring to was having parapets high enough to where they're screened, not actually putting screens around materials that are on the roof. Agreed. That would be inappropriate.
Right.
If I could just make another comment. For a project like this, where we want to know these details that haven't been presented, for me, the judgment has to do with the size of impact or the proportional impact, the size of the project and the impact that it has on its surroundings, which I see this area as actually transitional between commercial and neighborhood, right? So it's meeting, in my mind, it meets the intent of the specific plan and the intent of how this, these parcels are planned out. And I agree that all of these details are really important, but because the impact of the details are. of the details are to scale, they're, they're not huge. And so I feel like, even though I agree that knowing those details is really important, I feel like it's more important when the impact is much larger. Do you disagree?
Well, and all you have to do is go out there and look at existing buildings that have been built. And you'll see where they don't really, this is an area, I think, that needs attention. And your concern about how it's a transition from commercial to residential is real. Codes don't always know how to do that, right? And staff gets to respond based on what the codes say. So our ability to sort of craft a building that is a better neighbor, you know, it's not just about big projects.
Sure.
It's about, it's about also an approach, that this project is done well, the next one gets done well. So I guess that would be where I would...
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's hard. It's not necessarily like the size of the project and square footage, but the, in the impact, I guess. And that's really hard for me to quantify or to even verbalize, right? Like, it's an intuitive feeling.
You know, if you, if you're looking at it in terms of a kind of a mackerel effect that it might have, you must also consider that they're our neighbors and they're not interested in a mackerel effect, they're interested in what the immediate neighborhood looks like and the effect that, in fact, indeed, they might be the most important consideration if, you know, examining this.
I, I feel like it's, when I think of what could go there, what could be allowed to be there, this is a relatively low-impact project that is suitable for that zoning of that area. And, you know, I, I agreed. When I first looked at the building, I thought, that's a pretty boring building. And then I started looking around Moreau Bay and we have a lot of these flat-roofed, sort of boxy buildings. And yet they did try for some articulation. I do think the open carports underneath actually create a sense of openness and airy space. I personally, you know, as we start looking at housing more, I would be more interested in seeing us approve more carports versus garages, because I think that will get parking off streets. So I, I'm, I'm actually a fan of carport-type parking. I, I understand the, the need and concern for getting all the details. And, and yet I also see there's a process where the details...
That's not what I'm saying, though. It's not about getting all the details. It's about finding those significant details that are going to make this work on this site. That's what a CUP is about. A planning commission has the responsibility to look at this kind of level of issue. Because we're saying, yes, this use will fit here. Why do we think it's appropriate? And how they build it is what makes it work, right? So it's not about being overly indulgent in the details. I think it's, if, you know, if this is so conceptual, if you take the trees away from that rendering, that's a pretty simple-looking building.
Yeah, 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 it's pretty basic.
And to Joe's point, he's always so good at this, there's hardly any relief. There's also not a street facade. So as you start to look at it, it has the sort of almost commercial vibe of indifference. That's not what it should be. I, I'm disappointed the designer's not here, because then we might have been able to work through and suggest a couple of things, gotten certainties on materials. He could have said, yes, we're going to do relief on the windows. Right now, these windows could be like nail-on-windows, which means you've got not much glass to begin with, but very simple stuff. For me, the details are important here because we don't want a boxy building that, I think, looks not, it, it needs to, I think, have the richness of the house next to it, of residential architecture. This doesn't have that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we could challenge it, or I could, as an architect, just challenge it based on what I think is the lack of architecture. I think it's bigger than that because we really want to make it work, you know, and, I don't want to tell the designer how to do it. I'm with Joe. I don't think I want to come in and say, do this color, do this material. What I'm hoping is they come back and they say, you know, we believe in this design, here's how we're going to make sure that you know it's going to work.
Yeah. And you know, the biggest thing for me, it just hit me, is what Betty said. This is a hotel. Where's the signage? So that's part of our job. Where's the signage?
But, but that is, that is in, that is part of the condition that they have to go with.
Yeah, but, but I'd like to see, you know, it gets back to what we're looking at. I want to see how it's going to work under the conditional use permit.
I'm not...
We should have signage.
How often do projects come forward with signs at this stage? The, the precise sign that they're going to use?
Almost never, the precise sign. You will oftentimes get a building that has, that's a commercial building that comes before you and it'll say "sign" on it.
Right.
It'll say the location.
Yeah.
That's oftentimes what you get. Sometimes we do get actual, you know, what the signage looks like.
Yeah.
Many times, though, you know, that potentially changes over time when they actually start digging into the nuts and bolts of what's on there. They get a better feeling for the, for the site, they'll oftentimes change the signage when they're going through a building and things like that.
I mean, this, this hotel doesn't actually have a name yet, right?
No.
Just for what it's worth, we're not asking for a, a sign permit here. We're asking for a rough size, where it's going to be, does it address what side, you know, how do they do it? How do they light it? They can conceptually give us an idea. I'll tell you, every planning commission I've been on, we made that a requirement because signage is a big deal. It impacts neighborhoods. People are very sensitive to it. It's, and it's, we're not telling them to give us the, the final thing. What we want is something that we know is the, the beginnings of a responsible project.
I, I sincerely apologize for interrupting. I know the public comment is over, but I just wanted to add, you know, we aren't proposing any sign. Actually, that's why there's no sign on the plan. There isn't going to be a sign, more than likely. So, that's...
Okay, thanks for that clarification. That's interesting.
Bobby, how do you find it?
Address?
Online.
Google Maps?
Yeah.
No, I know online, but as someone's just driving up to the building, wouldn't it want to be identified?
I mean, you know, we're just keeping it very discreet in, in regards to, you know, we don't, we don't need to advertise basically on the street. So we'll advertise online or what have you. And if, you know, they will make a booking online and...
So I'm, I'm not trying to argue here because I don't really understand all this yet, but wouldn't the neighbors want to know it's a hotel?
Yeah, but we're not exactly trying to make it look, you know, like a sort of traditional hotel. Like you say, with a garish sign or, or what have you, that's, you know, that's part of the plan is to...
Well, yeah, and that's what we would hope, is it's real modest, you know, that kind of thing, right? But if I'm living there, I guess I'd like to know what it is.
Yeah. And one of the points that was brought up by, one of the points that Bobby, that was brought up by this commission is the fact that we're transitioning from what we call hotel traditionally and what we don't anymore. You're saying there won't be any signs, so therefore that is a hotel. I've never seen a hotel without a sign, period, in my life. So if that's what we're going to, we're going to have a lot of this in Moreau Bay that has no identity, that people don't know what it is. I don't know if I'm ready for that, but that gets back to what we're trying to figure out.
So when this project was noticed, were all the neighbors advised of what was going in there so that the adjacent neighbors would know?
Yes.
This is a hotel project going in? And, and it is posted, there's a sign on the property right now.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, you had a motion already. You already had a motion.
We sort of had my motion and then Bill's motion and we had no seconds on anything.
Well, we did make a motion.
I think Joe seconded Bill's motion.
No.
Okay, not formally. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I didn't make a motion, I just offered.
Will you, will you repeat your motion again?
Okay. My motion was to approve the parking exception, to require a roof plan for staff to review to make sure that things were hidden by the parapet, to condition a charging station, to require container sizes for staff review and that the street trees be mature. I, I feel like a lot of the other issues, such as lighting and so on, are covered by our codes. And...
So your motion is to approve the project and let's administratively make those changes?
Yes, yes.
I think I can, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, Nancy, you want to call it?
No.
Commissioner Ingafia?
No.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roshan?
No.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
So here goes my motion. I would like to do a list of expectations and ask the project to come back with the encouragement that it's a good project for this area and what we want is the certainty around these specific issues. My motion would ask them to give us a material list. If there is no signage, just make sure that that's clear and part of the submittal. Container sizes on all the, the plant materials with the, the awareness of what that's going to look like and, and if the designer could speak to the maturity level at the hearing, that would be great. I think we need a building section that actually shows the parapets with the photovoltaics. I'm encouraging stronger architecture. I think the architecture has not been developed enough. I'm fine with the simple architecture, but I think, to Joe's point, there needs to be relief, overhangs, depth of windows, something. And I'd very much like to have one of the elevations or, or the two elevations that have buildings next to them to show in scale the adjacent building. Finally, a, an idea of the lighting plan, and I'm mostly concerned about the carport. I don't know, others could be about other things. And it's quite often, this is a really sensitive thing to have on a street like that. So I really want to see attention paid to how the lighting's done for the carports. And to, with encouragement and thanks, ask the, the developer to come back.
Is there a second?
I, I will second that.
Any discussion?
I just wanted a friendly amendment.
Oh, yeah.
And that's more detail regarding the landscaping, what Joe brought up about water, long-term planning for landscaping.
I don't know how the, the, I don't know how they can do it.
Okay. Because if they can't do it, then I won't add it. Joe, remember, you're the one that brought it up, so...
I don't know how you condition...
I'm not sure that's appropriate. I do think there are, there's a lot of discussion going on right now at the county level about regional solutions for the water challenges in many of our communities, but especially along the coast.
Okay.
And been in several meetings that are addressing that. So I think we're looking at water as larger than just the individual municipalities and how we're going to...
Yeah.
And, and in my defense, I acknowledge that that's just a kind of a Cassandra warning that we can't do anything about right now, but that we should always be thinking about.
Okay. Because that's why I called it friendly, because I don't require it, but, so we'll drop it. But I would also support the motion. I would also support...
And also, I, I just would also encourage people, we can't, we can't not think of landscaping.
True.
It's so important to have that softening of the environment, but also what it gives back to the environment.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we can't decide we don't have enough water, we have to stop planting trees, so... Okay, any other discussion?
Scott, could I ask, is there anything I should add to that motion?
I, I have a couple of clarifying questions for you. What did, who was the second?
Joe.
Joe, oh, thank you. Sorry. So you, Vice Chair Roshan, you, on the architectural side, I think you requested stronger architecture than you were talking about adding additional relief and maybe looking at, you know, window depths and things like that to add shadow lines.
Relief, shadow.
Shadow lines like that.
Could be done with overhangs, depth.
Yeah, okay.
We don't want to prescribe it.
Yeah, okay, that's the kind of level we're talking about, though, of the change. Okay, that's...
Nothing radical. I, I think it's a really strong start.
Okay. And I, I like the sort of simple form of it. It's sort of in keeping with architecture in Moreau Bay, quite frankly, I think. But, but that's good, that's good. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't more severe than that and we, we needed to ask...
No, no, I, I guess maybe we should just say, I mean, I feel good about the project. I think it just has to get over that, that hump and I want more confidence in it.
Okay.
And can I just ask Scott one question? Scott? Would this be the first hotel in Moreau Bay without a sign?
The sign thing is, is interesting. We'll circle back around with the applicant on that. I mean, it seems like through even social media and things like that, you're going to call it something or want to call it something?
Yep.
And I would think when you want to call it something, you want to put it on the building. But we'll, we'll circle back around.
Thank you. And I just wanted you to bring, again, notice, I didn't bring that, I just want you to bring that, that back to me because I'm happy with the good start, but we want more, but can you also address that? Because I don't want there to start being hotels without names of hotels.
Maybe, and maybe next time Bobby can convince me. But right now, being discreet to the point of anonymous doesn't seem public-focused.
But I can see it as an effort to blend into a residential street, not having a big...
Yeah, right.
Or not trying to look as commercial.
Right. But it could be something so small and...
There's a hotel on the waterfront that just has its address. That's the name.
Yeah, that is the, that is the address. That's true. But you do also have, like, even some, some of our apartment complexes are named, right? You know, they have a name for the apartment complex, it seems like.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. I will, I will talk to them and see what they have.
I would also say that...
That would be nice to have that.
Vacation rentals supposedly are required to have signage out front, that they're a vacation rental.
Yeah.
Now, I don't know that that's actually happening, but it's supposed to be there with a phone number, contact and all of that.
Yeah.
So in terms of community stuff, I think it's actually kind of important. It's not just for clientele finding it, but who do they contact if there's a...
Yeah. And, and that was just a friendly ask for staff because I think it would be better to call it something than to have it anonymous. I just feel that because my, where I live, we have a name, like what you said, Scott. We have a name of my, of my complex. So it just would look better, sound better, but that, that'll be up to the applicant and staff. If that's not required, it's not required.
That sounds good. Want to call? I think they're ready.
I think we're ready.
I think they're ready. Take roll. Take roll. Roll call?
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingafia?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
No, sorry.
Commissioner Roshan?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
No.
Motion passes three to, thank you.
We did it. Took longer than I thought. All right, thank you to Bobby and to the commissioners. Lot of good discussion there. And to staff, as always, moving on, I have nothing under new business. I have nothing under unfinished business except as early...
Oh, I have some new business.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is that a new business or a planning commissioner comments in a future agenda item?
Future agenda item, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I was thinking might...
Thank you, sorry.
...fit there. Just in terms of the way...
Yeah, yeah, got it.
And I wanted to clarify, I wanted to clarify too, Susan, because we did bring something up earlier and I want to, again, see how Scott's going to work this one. Before, on April 19th, we had sought the comment of other boards and commissions possibly, as well as the other planning commissioners on public benefits. Are we going to close that circle, have any other boards or commissions or anybody else talked about public benefits that we should be getting before a drop-dead date? And we should have a drop-dead date, by the way. I want to give us a date. Roshan called it April 30 days after April 19th. Now we're in July, July 19th. So what are we going to do, Commissioner?
Dea copa.
Okay. So all I'm saying is if we do get that input from other boards and commissions, because we sought that, right? Joe?
Didn't we see?
I do recall staff saying that we likely would not go to other commissions with this because that would, that would be something that council would need to dictate to.
And I was simply reading the motion. What, Commissioner, I was reading what he asked for.
Right.
There also is the opportunity, you certainly, one of you, two of you, no more than that, could reach out to the chairs of the other boards and, and see if there's interest there. And that is what we could go to council with, if there is desire on the, on the, on the other boards to weigh in, like Harvard Advisory Board, Public Works Advisory Board, whatever it is. And we could take that to council and, and give them that information and see if they're interested in having us do that. And then we could do a, you know, a situation where we go, before those boards or whoever's the staff person associated with that board, I could sit down with them and work on.
The board, Bobby.
So anyway, there's definitely options for what we could do for that. And so if there is, like I said, if there's one of you that wanted to reach out to the, or maybe it's chair to chair, and Susan, you could do that, see if there's interest on those other boards, and if there are, then we could take that along with a brief report to the city council, making that request, and noting that there's interest from the other boards to also discuss it and go from there, so.
And I know that the energy obviously is on the subcommittee, because Joe and I are the subcommittee with Sean Green, so we, you know, if we could do that, that's another opportunity. That way Susan and Bill don't have to, because they've got their own irons and their own fires. So Joe or I could do that as well. It's if we, we are a formal subcommittee.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. It could, it could be, any of you probably should just be, no more than two, works fine, you could.
Because I would recommend Joe and I do it, since we're the subcommittee.
And so, yeah, so you could, you could reach out to the board member, the chair of those boards and ask them about the interest there. You know, certainly you could do that along with reaching out to the staff person that's in charge of those, you know, administering to those boards. And so we can give them some information about what's the planning commission's been doing up to this point.
Would it also be appropriate to reach out to the tourism bureau since they're not an official city board anymore?
That's entirely up to the commission.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I would recommend it, just because it seems like.
And I'll ask Joe this, the only other thing is that we had a goal of trying to get this in as soon as possible, so I don't know how much work he or I could do to, you know, regarding this effort and what our goal is as far as trying to get it up to council.
So I'm happy to give the, Joe, Mike, I'm happy to give you contact information for the, the staff that, for those boards, as well as for tourism. You can reach out and talk to them and go from there. And if there's anything that I can do to help with that, I'm happy to do that. That sounds good? Is that a good place to start?
I'm trying to remember what it is that we should send them. I know we did a report. Is there anything else we might include with that?
No.
And that could be the start, to see if there's interest in having that discussion, and, and then certainly we could, you know, I could, you know, huddle with the, again, go to council, get the authorization, and then I can work with the other staff members for those bodies to.
You can talk.
Yeah, because as of right now, we have that April 19th report where Sean stood there and gave a 45-minute report and a very good, you know, overview, so we could just submit that. You know, one thing you might think.
I've got my files, as a matter of fact.
You could also do this reach out informally, so it's, you're not really asking them to join as much as to be aware of what community benefits are, and then they might have some ideas or some support or input. I don't think you're trying to collaborate with the other committees. So it's kind of an informal thing, but I sort of like the energy it might create.
Yeah, I.
Joe and I will talk.
The business situation, we got significant.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do it at the subcommittee level.
That sounds.
Is that fine with you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Chair and vice chair.
I'll, I'll reach out to both of you, and we'll set up a time that we can sort of game plan that, and then I can get you contact information, and we'll go from there.
I think one of the really important things with that is that, that other, say, Harbor Commission, the Harbor Board, they're, they're going to understand so much more about the needs, you know, the specific challenges of waterfront businesses as regards, you know, whatever we're suggesting they put in, you know, they can come around and say, you know, that's really not a great, or it is a fabulous thing to recommend. So I think it is important to get the nuts and bolts of, of these various groups, so.
So we'll throw it away. We'll work with Scott, and we'll get people involved. Is that okay, Joe?
Oh, absolutely, sure.
Okay, so that's our unfinished business. One quick comment I want to make is, again, and I know it's paper, but it's really okay to get these reports printed out by staff. And that is a way to sort of, it's a little easier to communicate about pages that way. So, and I remember this coming up a lot when we were working on the general plan, because a lot of people had it on their computers, and I generally got stuff printed out, and the pages were completely different. You know, because what shows up on your computer, it's different than, you know, we print out the staff report, you know, it's going to be page whatever. So they're, they're happy to do it.
Okay.
We used to have mailboxes, but Gina will pick, you know, she sticks an envelope on the door for me with the report.
Traditionally, what I've done is I've always used this, the agenda I've gotten from staff and refer to the page number on that, unless they've given me an amended agenda.
Right.
I always refer to that one agenda I got, so.
Yeah.
That's how I've been working it.
Yeah, these agendas don't actually have page numbers on them, the printed out ones.
So that's also something that, that I can have Gina do, because the packet that we produced is numbered.
Yeah.
I think she just prints from the original files when she's been printing that out more recently, and probably something we could get away, we could go away from and have her just print from the agenda thing, so it's numbered, so it all meshes. Normally, Commissioner Rodriguez, I also have the electronic version of the staff report up, so I would be able to track that, but I didn't have it up today, because I couldn't get access to the internet when I first got here, for whatever reason, but it's working now, so I'm sure what happened.
We found the picture, so, yeah.
Okay, so other comments and future agenda items. Bill, you had one.
Yeah, I got a couple, actually. So this past weekend, I did a drive up the coast and went by Moss Landing and could see the Vistra site from the road. Super interesting location, immediately adjacent to the harbor and all of that. Interestingly, how similar it is in some ways? It's got smokestacks.
It does.
I guess I'd like to formally and publicly request a tour for the planning commission. I think it would help us immensely. I think it's really important to understand it, and part of it is to sort of understand how Vistra, like, what they did there that they're doing here. Like, I'm super interested, like, were they partners with PG&E there, and what's their partner relationship here? So it could be that kind of a, of a tour, and see where the, where the similarities exist.
It's very interesting. I mean, it is very interesting. I, you know, I went out there, it was, it was more than worthwhile to go out there and check it out, for sure, so, and it's, I think that's a good idea, if the planning commission's available to do that. And the good thing is, Vistra's here right now, so I'll be able to talk to them tomorrow, so I'm happy to.
You should tell them that we're all really enthusiastic.
I will.
Field trip, two hours. So, second thing, we're getting very close to a master plan on Vistra, and I think it's really helpful that the planning commission play a preparatory role, and I think we would be valuable in that. I think we bring a different voice than the city council. And so I would suggest that, independent of city council, we would just have a group to be informed and to offer our perspective, create a subcommittee. I'd like to be a part of that subcommittee, because I think the complexity of this master plan is really a big deal to Morro Bay. The scope of it, the idea that it might be a phased master plan, that would also help, I think, the planning commission prepare for when it's submitted. And one of the advantages is that we would be, I think, helping, because I know schedule's a super issue, we would, the subcommittee would be, you know, trying to help, not, not just review or not just opine, but try to make a more smooth, more complete process around the master plan. Good idea?
Yeah.
I think it's an extraordinary idea, yeah.
I think what's even more important is that if we're in on the ground floor, we're less likely to get to that point of decision-making and say, well, we want you to come back in a month, because we don't like that, or we, you know. So if we can sort of lay some thoughtful.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to play out, we'll certainly have a couple of workshops. We were, we met with Coastal today, and we had them review the scope for a number of reasons, and they were in agreement, so we're moving forward with the contract now. And part of it is to do not only workshops, but stakeholder outreach, and I thought the commission could certainly participate in the front end that way to sort of, you know, help, you know, frame the process. So anyway, that's, that's kind of where I was thinking the plugin would be, and.
It makes sense to do both.
Yeah, 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 no, exactly. So, so anyway, that's the, that was the thought on my part for it. If you want to have the subcommittee, you probably, we need one more person to form.
Asia was the.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see that, I apologize.
At least, she was raising her hand, so I volunteered her.
I just said it without the mic on.
Okay, all good. Okay, that's good, okay, perfect.
So one last thing, and these meetings, even to our big audiences, are really fun. And I think, you know, this was a good discussion. One of the things that a commission tries to do, I think, is to build a, a reliable expectation of what, of what projects are and how they're submitted. And we've, you know, we've not always had unanimous votes, because I don't think we're there. One of the things that might help us is, and I'm willing to do this, is to do a submittal list, which might not be, Scott, it might not be enforceable, but it would be an encouragement of what the commission would like to see. So on the project tonight, almost like the very things we outlined, materials lists, you know, real landscape plans, having the designer be present, so we can have that. So these are things that the, the commission, and we will, you know, I'm willing to do a list and then have us agree on it, of course, would be able, you'd be able to get that to an applicant and say, this is what the commission is and how they're thinking.
Yeah, we, we have a submittal checklist. It's actually unfortunately very long, and we're, we're actually internally looking at it to pare it down and tailor it to the types of projects that we get. It's a one-size-fits-all thing, and it's, you know, it's, it's thick. But it would be the starting place, and there's categories in it, so it would be a lot easier for you to fill in things for consideration by the other commissioners, as opposed to starting from.
Right, and this is going to be stuff that we, that we take, that we prioritize. And so, you know, with the issues around, I don't know, water, maybe there's a way to address that as an unofficial, but a, a, a strong awareness. You know, the electric stuff, you know, the solar stuff, good architecture. Every commission doesn't have the same priorities. And the fact that when we get a CUP, I get the feeling that we really want to get a good project out of it. So I think this would help an applicant.
And would your idea be that this would, we would recommend that the list include this, but there would be, what, no prejudice if they decided not to, or would you?
I don't know, it's Scott, I mean, it depends what we're asking for, I guess.
Correct. That's perfectly said.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we have one now, we use it. I don't particularly care for it. And, you know, if, you know, I had all the time in the world, we would have new lists, but we don't, because I don't. So this, I mean, it's a, it's a worthwhile effort, it hasn't been looked at forever. So putting some eyeballs on it and having the planning commission kind of, you know, go through it, it'd be, probably be really helpful for us, and then, but would like you to, when we do that, to kind of look at it with an eye toward the types of applications that we get, because I would start to like to bifurcate and maybe have a few different ones for levels of projects, because handing somebody the list that we have right now, and you think, well, I'm doing a, you know, 200-square-foot bathroom addition, I have to have all of these things? Like, no, you don't.
No, you don't.
Yeah, yeah, it's in the backyard, no one can see it. I mean, just show me that you're going to match the materials and the architecture of the house, and I'm pretty good, you know, with it. But, yeah, so that's.
Is that something we can find online?
I'll, I'll, I'll send it to, I'll send it to all of you, I'll give you it in the, hopefully I can find it, the Word document version, so you can edit at your leisure, and, and then, once you've kind of gotten through it, you let me know, and I'll agendize it, and we'll have a little bit of a workshop on it.
And the reason I mention the prejudice is because, I mean, if we didn't make it mandatory, you know, certainly the applicants would realize it would be a foolish thing without a good reason not to, you know, do those things.
Yeah. And the other thing I wanted to say, Bill, to Bill's point and Susan, is the fact that we don't always agree, but I think one thing that the city residents of Morro Bay will agree is that the planning commission does its job every time. You can, you can be sure that when we get an application, especially if there's a conditional use permit, we are going to work it until we are satisfied that it's the best project we can prove and move it. So if there's one person here, doesn't matter, there could have been 100 people here. So what I'm saying is we're going to give it the best job we can give it every time.
There's hundreds online.
But, but that came up, but that came up tonight. So all I'm saying is that's our job anyway, so we shouldn't be.
Well, I, I don't mind disagreeing.
Sure, I love it.
I think that suggests a more thoughtful process.
Sure.
I'm always a little suspicious when it's always a.
Oh, yeah.
It's sort of.
Yeah.
I just.
It's okay.
And I think we're finding our way, actually. And, you know, one of the things that this is helpful with is, you know, we want to do this with staff, because you guys are the front line, and we also don't want to create extra work.
Yes.
So tonight, bringing a project back, but if the designer had been here.
That was, that was odd. I mean, normally designers are there, I was surprised when they didn't have the designer here, although, you know, the couple of times I plugged into the project throughout the process, the designer wasn't who we were talking to, we were talking to the project owners. And so I guess maybe, looking back at it, maybe that's.
And that's one of the encouragements, I think, that this list does, is to say, we really do want, this is not just a speculative building.
Yeah.
Right, and this, you know, so yes, we, we don't want a speculative. And I hope the designer's here at the next meeting, right? I mean.
I'm going to put that, we put that in the.
No, I'm just, seriously, I mean, I hope the applicant understood that. It would have been great to have the designer here, for our benefit.
Agreed, it's odd that somebody doesn't come before the planning commission and bring the designer of the project, since it wasn't like, again, a 200-square-foot addition, you know, to the back of a house.
No, exactly.
Anyway, I mean.
Okay.
So if it's okay with everybody, I'll start that. I'll do an outline and then pass it around.
Well, and Scott's going to send out what they have.
Yeah, 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 I'll send it out to you guys.
Scott, do you have any comments?
Couple of things.
Okay.
It doesn't look like we have any agenda items for the next meeting. The meeting after that is the 16th, and that's when the zoning code's coming back. We also today, on the meeting with Coastal Commission staff, we made our way through affordable accommodations with them. I think we have a path forward, need to do a little bit of work between now and then, but I think we're ready. So we'll bring it back. The request last time, in case any of you didn't remember, was to bring back the top 10 changes, I think that was by Vice Chair Roshan. We will have that as part of the staff report. You've had many, many months to review the draft code, and it's been online for a while, so.
Right next to my bed.
It's a good place for it, I'm sure.
Hear the Bible, right? Hear your Bible.
But anyway, so it is coming back, I'm giving you, you know, a couple of weeks, you know, warning, you know, almost a month, so, that it's coming back, and that we will do the top 10 changes, we have a good list for that, and we'll go through it, see where we get with it.
So Scott, we don't have a meeting, a first meeting in August?
August 2nd, yeah, we don't have any items for that agenda.
So we're good, now we're going to be on vacation anyway.
Is it definitely canceled, or...
We don't have any, yeah, we do not have agenda items.
So can we do that now? Can we just formally say? Because I won't feel bad about saying I can't be here on the 2nd.
No, it's fine, it is, it's, we don't have, no items for the agenda.
No, good, I don't miss another meeting.
So I have a question. When the draft code is brought back, our role will just be to review it at that time and make comments, or is it being...
It's always, so the, I mean, the, the code is largely the same as it has been for the last several years.
We're being asked to approve it, right?
Recommend approval to the city council, yeah. So this is, these are the, these are the approval hearings, and so I'm anticipating two for the planning commission. You've seen it once already. And again, it's largely, it's, you know, 90% of it is the same as it's all, it's been for the last several years. It's kind of some tweaks we've made in, in, in working with the Coastal Commission on the IP portion of it, which is the implementation plan, which is how we implement the California Coastal Act. And so we've been working on, you know, fine-tuning all of that, and the last piece of that was affordable accommodations, and we got some direction finally out of their statewide policy team on that, so.
Can we let the community know that it's coming, rather than just with the staff report, like, so that, I don't know, the chamber of commerce is ready with their comments?
Yeah, we, we have, we already have...
Betty, Betty knows in advance, that kind of thing.
We will do a, so we're, the plan is to get it out early, especially since we don't have the previous meeting, to get it posted early, to do social media posts on it, and to do notify me posts on it. So anybody signed up to get a planning commission agenda will also get it.
And when will that go out?
Probably in a couple of weeks. So it'll be about two, two weeks early. We don't have the report ready yet, so.
But we can't, can't we just somehow let everybody know? Because it's kind of a big deal. I want to make sure they're prepared.
What was that?
It would have had to go out for a couple of comments at some stage. You just mean...
You just mean notification.
Everybody wants to be prepared for, it's kind of a...
Notification.
I mean, I don't know, maybe it's not a big deal, but I know the chamber was very involved and...
Well, they, they've submitted their comments.
Yeah.
Are they done?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, we submitted, submitted the comments, we made many of the changes that were requested. They were good ones, they did a good job. Their Government Affairs Committee, they did some heavy lifting in that thing, and pointed out some things that potentially were clarity issues and things like that, and we, and we made changes to them to, to address those. So they did a good job, so. It wasn't, it wasn't a, it wasn't a minor effort on their part, so.
It's all on the city website, so when I go there, I can...
Yeah. I can certainly send out links tomorrow if you want. And that was it, that's all, that's all I had, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
All right, everybody, we are adjourned. We will not have our next meeting on August 2nd, but we encourage the public to go online and view the zoning code and be ready for the 16th. Will be the meeting we, we deal with that.
Thanks to Betty for showing up tonight.